All right, let me start. Our members are present, Matt is virtual. And we'll start with the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. Hard to do that sometimes. All right. I don't see anybody from the public, thanks for accommodating this. It's a beautiful day out there, it's gonna be a beautiful evening, I'm sure. That you'll make good use of your evening tonight. Comments from the selectmen? And I will, Matt, why don't we go to you virtually first?
Great, sure, thanks. So I just wanna start by sharing with you both and with the members of the public that I've decided not to run for reelection in November for the Board of Selectmen. It was, it's been a very difficult decision for me to make. I've enjoyed working with you all very much over the last six years and serving the town in this capacity. When I first started in 2019, November, I was told by the Democratic Town Committee when they recruited me that it'd be only about two meetings a month. And about three months later, we started COVID and it felt like we were meeting every day. You know, and I, at the same time, really appreciate that I've had the opportunity to sit side by side with you and so many other committed leaders in our towns' organizations over the last six years. But, you know, for me personally, I wanna be able to do everything that I do, you know, a hundred and ten percent. And it's been challenging the last year that I've been in a day job that's been more and more demanding on me as serving at the, it's the Deputy Commissioner at the Department of Economic and Community Development. And I just didn't feel that I could make the commitment for another two-year term. And then when you couple that with, you know, at home, I have two daughters that are getting into high school now and I only have so many years that they're living in the house with me. I wanna also be able to, to balance my work and life together. So I, I felt that this was the right moment to step, step aside, let somebody else step up and look forward to still being involved and being supportive in my day job to the town and to all of you and your work, so, thank you.
And yeah, thank you, Matt, I appreciate that, I appreciate your comments and I appreciate the work you've done over the last six years. It's been really great, this board's been really great, I think. I think this is the third iteration of this board. That, you know, we had Steve Bernhardt and then Carol Conklin and then you. Listen, you bring a lot to the table, you bring obviously a lot of experience at the state level now. And I know you're doing great work up there, so I know your time demands are probably a lot more right now. And I, and I understand why they would want more of your time, so thanks for doing what you did and thanks for serving and, and I know you, so I know you're gonna still be involved, so.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, I made a comment earlier and that is quite similar, I appreciate working with Matt. I think, Matt, you've had the, the interest in this town in, in, you know, at the forefront always and, and we appreciate that, I think we've worked collaboratively and that's important and that's the way it should be and that, I think, our model's a good model and I hope we continue to follow that model.
Thanks. It might be in your list of comments, Carl, but I just wanted to follow up and see how the conversation would at the high school athletic fields on the drainage situation.
I'll, I'll start with that. We had about ten of us met out there. And the grass is actually coming in well. I guess there's some uneven spots, some, a couple of depressions, which they believe over the course of several years would probably even out from mowing and stuff like that. But they did bring in, Fosse O'Neil did bring in a, an ex, a, a fields expert and they're gonna bring in another company to come in and take a look and to see how they could make it better. But the field itself, the grass has come in very well. I thought I was gonna get out there and see dead grass, I mean, there are spots. But the field has come in really well, they're more concerned about an area where maybe when they laid the sod, you know, this got laid and then there might be a little ridge and then the next piece got laid, so they're worried about that. But it is filling in, they are bringing in a fields expert or a sports fields expert, so I don't know what's been done since then, that was, I wanna say July fourteen, July ten or fourteen, I'm not sure which. It's right around the time of our last meeting. And I did go out that day, so I will keep you updated on that as I hear more from Kurt and Fuss.
Thanks, Carl, besides the, the grass growing in, what about the drainage of the field overall, is that having any issues or?
Nope. It's outstanding.
Great, good to hear, thank you.
Yeah, the drainage is good, better than good. Do you have anything?
No, nothing else.
Couple things. You know, I, I wanted to go over Celebrate Saber, just to kind of get, give you guys an idea as to expenses and why we're putting money aside and why we continue, we need to continue to be vigilant in terms of if we want to have this event yearly, or maybe not yearly, but we need to make sure that we have enough money in the budget or from other sources to do that, so. Basically, we generated about forty-seven thousand dollars in revenue, the largest part of that being from You Flowers, twenty thousand dollars, as the main sponsor. We put ten thousand in from the town budget. That was budgeted for the end of fiscal year, June twenty-five, we have twenty thousand in this year's budget. Vendor revenue was ten thousand, so we have twenty from, from You Flowers, twenty from the town budget, ten from vendor revenue, then we had some smaller sponsors, we had Western Bank, Guilford Savings Bank, at twenty-five, thirty-five hundred and twenty-five hundred, Builders Concrete, put in five hundred dollars, Jam Realty put in two hundred and fifty dollars, so we generated a nice amount of income, I don't know if that main sponsor is gonna be there every year. Or maybe that main sponsor isn't going to be there at that level every year. So if we want to continue to do this, we need to generate the revenue or at least figure out where it's gonna come from. Some of the expenses, just to give you an idea, the main stage band, including the rental of the stage, the audio, you have to have an audio engineer, and the, so that, that is about eight thousand dollars, the band was sixty-five hundred dollars. On the north stage, that was obviously less expensive, that was about twenty-five hundred for the audio and the two bands. The entertainment, Jason Tardy, I think, was a musician, the Stilt Walker, the Wandering Balloons, those are all about a thousand, seven hundred, five hundred dollars. But Big Daddy Racing is twenty-six hundred dollars, because it's free and it's a big hit every year, so it's probably worth it. So entertainment totals about sixteen thousand and that includes music and those folks walking around. And then toilets, sixty-two hundred dollars. We marketed the event for eight grand, beer cups were fifteen hundred dollars. I had to get insurance for the event, eighteen hundred dollars for liability insurance, including there was a terrorism writer and I, of course, elected that. Then we had to buy stage signage. So, and then we had a drone photographer that was free, because that was run by somebody out of the police department. So for events, services and materials, that was about twenty thousand. And then staffing, we don't include yet, because staffing is basically, everybody's been able to eat it within their budget, so the police department is still gonna have about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar surplus this year. So they were able to eat the overtime of the officers in there and we did the same at Park and Rec in Town Hall, so. Eventually, though, we may want to budget that in and we estimate that to be about thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars. So, you know, you have an event that is not an inexpensive event, it's a, it's a fifty to sixty thousand dollar event every year. But, you know, if we, if the town eventually puts aside twenty or thirty thousand dollars, we're putting twenty this year, so next year if we do thirty and then we're getting vendor revenue of ten, you can see how eventually you don't need to rely on that big sponsor eventually, so that, you wanna get it to a point where, you know, you're not worried about whether you have enough revenue for the event. I just wanted to give you guys an update on that, it's not an inexpensive event to put on. And, you know, as long as everybody is good with continuing to put that on, we will do that. That's number one. Number two, we are working on our America twenty-twenty-six celebration. I think I mentioned this previously, I'm asking the Board of Finance to put aside about ten thousand dollars for America Two-Fifty. The idea, I don't know if we've talked about it, the idea would be to kind of make it a weekend event. I think it's the weekend of June twenty-ninth, the Father's Day weekend is the weekend before. So it would be, it's later, it would be later next year, June twenty-ninth. The idea would be to incorporate Saber Point in and then maybe on Saturday, do a lot of historical society events, the library's involved, maybe get some of our civic organizations like the Rotary Club and maybe the Exchange Club involved and make it a weekend of events culminating in Celebrate Saber. That is kind of what the committee came up with for next year. And we are working with, with Saber Point in to perhaps have them doing some things down at Saber Point in Friday, Saturday. So really make Old Saber a destination for the weekend. You know, yesterday we met with, there's a new Main Street Business Events Association. We met with two of the representatives who are kinda heading it and they have twenty-seven Main Street businesses involved in their Main Street Business Events Association. They feel that there's a lot more traffic in Old Saber this year, they said both of them. One of them is Cottage Flare and the other one is the, the antique shop right across the street from that, where they have different, you look like you're about, you're on mute, Matt. Yeah.
Maximus.
Yes. And both of them have said there's better traffic this year, Pearls and Plaid said there's better traffic this year. And when they said that, this board knows as well as anybody, we put the money into marketing this town. And it is hard to tell the Board of Finance, it's hard to quantify the results, so. And really, the best way to do it is to have your merchants tell you, we're doing better this year. There seems to be more people coming to Old Saber. So that was really great to hear and I kinda tacked that on, because it just occurred to me. But anyway, America Two-Fifty, there's gonna be some things going on, we'll develop that as we move on. And, oh, surplus appropriations. I did go to the Board of Finance this past week. So George Chang on the Board of Finance felt like there were too many items in last year's appropriation that were too small. He goes, if we have capital projects, why don't we take a look at capital projects? So I tried to pare down the list a lot this year. We anticipate the surplus to be north of three million dollars. To keep our rainy day fund at seventeen percent, we need to put aside two-hundred-and-seventy thousand. We have committed approximately six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to the Acton Public Library renovation. We already have a hundred thousand that we've committed. And it was the intention of the Board of Finance to put aside additional funds, so that is in there. I did, Matt, put aside a hundred thousand for resiliency projects, just to put more money in the bucket there, because we do keep, we, we are active right now in the midst of a grant that we're probably gonna wanna follow through on after it's finished. I did wanna put a little bit of money towards probate construction. It is a construction project in Town Hall and even though the other nine towns will be contributing to the construction, I just thought Old Saber could put in maybe a larger piece and that was fifteen thousand. We're putting aside twenty thousand towards human resources, the firm we're hiring, McInnes, I have a call in a little bit with Chris McInnes about an issue. We did budget ten, so this will give us thirty for the year. Next year, the intention is to budget the full thirty and see what additional funding we need after that. I did put a little money aside for early voting, I just wanna get a good idea of where the registrars need to be in their budget for November of twenty-five and then we'll see where we are and then maybe put additional funds for November of twenty-six. I asked for additional funding for traffic control. Billy Clathy has about ten grand in the DPW budget, but I thought I, we should put a little bit more aside, because we're gonna have projects on Route One, not only sidewalks, that the contractor should have built into his budget, but if it runs over, I wanna have additional funding for that. And also, we're gonna be doing crosswalks on Main Street and that is an entirely fun, town-funded project. So I'm, I'm going to need additional, or we are gonna need additional funding for traffic control. So we have Matt and Scott, I wanna make sure you're familiar with the term other post-employment benefits, OPEB. Okay, those are vacation liabilities and sick time liabilities that your employees, union employees are able to, you know, Scott, you, right? And due to a retirement that we have coming up on September first of this year, we are going to drain our OPEB account and it's gonna go negative in a big way in September. I think, the former Chief of Police, I think it was very public that we said he's got all these days accumulated, both vacation and sick time. And despite any other benefits that he may have gotten or any other parts of the settlement, he was going to be entitled to a relatively large number, just based on if he were to retire without any incentive, so we are proposing that we put aside, Leanne is proposing, we put aside two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to keep our other post-employment benefit account in order. Now, that is something that we were very public about, that we were gonna owe him this money regardless. Okay, so what this does is it brings that account back into balance so that when another employee were to retire, we have the funding there. And we do put money aside every year, is Matt still here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I'm still here, just driving.
We do put money aside every year for other post-employment benefit, but we just wanna make sure that we don't go too far in the negative, so we're recommending two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And lastly, we are trying to build a new public works garage and John O'Brien and several members of the Board of Finance are like, you know, where can we put a large part of this surplus that will save taxpayers' money down the line? So I think as a group, we may recommend putting one-point-five million dollars towards the Public Works project. And that still leaves, after all those projects, about four-hundred thousand dollars that just goes into capital non-recurring. So that was a first pass. Was that in your package?
I didn't see it.
Matt, was that in your package, did you see it?
I didn't see that, no.
Okay, I'm gonna send it to you, okay? I'll send you guys both and then you can review it and comment as you see fit, but.
Can I?
Go ahead, Matt.
I was gonna ask a question now, I mean, just in terms of timing, I know we're also looking at the Clark Community Park project and there's a substantial price tag with that, just as we think about the order of operations between the Public Works Garage and Clark Community Park, which is coming up first and what's the reason for the prioritization?
Which is coming up first, I'm not sure which is coming up first. Is that what you asked me, which is coming up first?
Yes.
If I had, I, I'm hoping that Clark Community Park is a project that can be fully designed, fully designed in twenty-six, it's not fully designed yet and you're gonna have to talk to Ray, Matt, I don't have all the details on that. As to when it will be fully designed and why it isn't, I know Little League went to Park and Rec and said, don't get rid of our Little League field over there. So I know they've kinda gone back and trying to see if there is a way to incorporate a baseball field in the design, because the new design actually eliminated the baseball field. So I know it's gonna, Jeff has to take that into consideration. I don't wanna rule out bonding that either. At the end of the day, I don't think this would be a large bonding project, but maybe it's a way to get both these projects done, you know, we have a lot of cash. We put some cash aside from the surplus. We already are gonna have probably a million dollars set aside from the Park and Rec Fund, easily. By the time that goes to construction, there'll be over a million dollars set aside for that, so. I think both projects will be in relatively good shape if they're ready to go forward in twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, I just don't, it just, things are, things move awfully slowly now with the, I just. For the Public Works Garage, we have a concept design. We are having that reviewed, so we're, we're a ways away from that. But that is a very uncomplicated design. Right, it's just one small building and then additional garage space, that is a Butler Building, essentially, so. And the field, I don't know what the latest estimates are on that are, but. Good news also, yesterday, we received from the State of Connecticut Department of Housing a seventy-six, almost seventy-seven thousand dollar grant in Community Investment Act funding for the town of Old Saber to complete a two-part analysis of mixed-use multifamily housing related, related regulations in the B-one district, so that is the Main Street south of Route One, so Main Street as you come off Route One and come down towards Town Hall. The study and associated funding is designed to assist in the implementation of recommendations offered in the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-six Affordable Housing Plan, which was adopted by the town of Old Saber, we were right on it and we got our plan in immediately. This grant award shall be used to complete a feasibility analysis, which will seek to identify the ideal parcels that can support housing in the B-one district. Additionally, it will fund an analysis of soil samples for septic feasibility and completing a parking demand review in the B-one district. Part two of the study would explore creating new incentives that would attract developers, as well as analysis of the existing land use regulation, regulations, which focus on how to further enhance development opportunities. So this is something that, once complete, we are hoping there is opportunity to go to this, the Connecticut Municipal Development Authority, CAMDA, and maybe partner with a developer to put some additional housing on Main Street, maybe above businesses. And that's the idea. Matt, I, I'm not sure if you were aware that Chris Costa was working on this?
Yeah, actually, Chris gave me a heads up that she was submitting it and had talked me through it, so I really appreciate not only the heads up, but that Chris took the initiative to have the conversation with DOH and to explore this.
Really, really great, and even better, it's not a reimbursable grant, so it isn't something that we have to, even though we have plenty of time, it's not something that we have to go to town meeting with. It is gonna be money that is given to us and we obviously have to justify our expenses, so. Really kinda cool, I think that is kind of the holy grail of what every town loves is housing on their Main Street, housing above shops, that's the idea, more traffic on Main Street. So I, Chris deserves a lot of credit for the initiative and, and getting, getting the funding. I'm sorry to be so long-winded on the comments, any, anything else based on any of those comments or anything new?
Carl, is, is there any update in the conversations with John Kadaman as attorney on Saber Point Dock and Dine Property?
Uh, no, we are still not in two weeks, I, we are, have not agreed to terms.
All right, thank you.
There's still about four, four items or so that we can't seem to get over the hump on. And I'm waiting for a response, I expect a response, I just haven't had one yet. So. Item number five, approval of the minutes for the selecting June twenty-fourth, we didn't, we skipped over the minutes last time. So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of June twenty-fourth, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments, I'm sure these have been reviewed. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll move the minutes of July eighth, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, edits?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good, discussion and possible call of special town meeting. This is with regard to appropriating, it's actually fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars to the estuary, that conversation, I think, went very well with the Board of Finance last Tuesday. When Heather Malardo stated the amount of funding that they currently had in the bank, the Board of Finance took our recommend, recommendation and added six hundred dollars to it. So, and the second item is to repair the portion of the foundation at the Katherine Hepburn Cultural Arts Center. Brett Elliott appeared and discussed it. It is a town building and it's a problem that Tom McWhicky identified and Brett appropriately received three bids on that and this is the low bid, all the bids were under twenty-five thousand, but they were all in a range, so it's a good sign that they were all in that tight range. So based on that, I'll move, call the special town meeting, which is slated for August fifth, two thousand twenty-five at five P M, it should be a very brief town meeting. So I'll move that, is there a second?
Second.
Matt, anything?
Uh, you said August fifth?
August five at five.
All right, just noting for you both that I will be out of town.
That's okay.
And unable to attend.
It's a town meeting, it's fine. I don't know if you'll have a chance to come in and sign the call or not.
Yeah, I can take care of that.
Okay, I'll tell, I'll tell Georgeanne that you'll be in.
Thank you.
Cable TV Advisory Board, so we just did this.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't vote there.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you, good catch. See, Matt, that's why I need you on the board.
Yep, solid.
Yeah. Cable TV Advisory Board, we just appointed these two folks, Jim and Bernard, but I guess the timing of it was such that it was at the end of any projected term, so. I guess the timing of it was such that it was at the end of any projected term, so. Uh I'm moving that we reappoint. To the Cable TV Advisory Board, James Theryan and Bernard Gally Jr. Both appointments expire in July of two thousand twenty seven. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Um just as a comment, we hadn't had a representative for this board in probably ten years. And then we had two and so it's awesome. It's very good. And I wanna thank these guys for stepping up. So. Then moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And lastly, to the Cemeteries Committee, reappointment of Scott Carson. Uh I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Scott has done great work at the Upper Cemetery. Uh. With Public Works, by the way. So uh some small trees had to come down. There are now some historical placards up there. Uh they were able to identify areas where um. I, I I don't know if it's, I think it's where maybe some uh slaves were buried or maybe some. Folks who were indentured were were uh were uh buried and maybe there was no marker, so they. They actually were able to identify that. Um and Scott has just taken. Ownership of the cemetery. He used Samarpa funding. Uh and I know he does tours periodically. Uh just like uh Torrance Downs does tours of the Cypress. Scott also does tours of the Upper Cemetery. So we're very, very fortunate to have someone who. Takes that kind of interest in our cemetery and the historical virtue of it. So um. Anyway, it's been moved and seconded. I don't know if you guys know Scott or are aware of that, uh but does good job of it. So um alright, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, we'll let you go. Um. I'll make the motion to adjourn if there's no further business.
Thank you.
None. Thank you, guys.
See ya. All those in favor, bye-bye. See you. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.